Record. Okay.
I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting, it's April 29th, and we are doing it virtually. Let's all say pledge a leader.
It's just a moving flag, but we can start whenever.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always fun.
Roll call.
Mr. Dozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes. Okay, we have item two, executive session. They have a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Craig, can you bring up the reasoning for the executive session?
I don't know if she put it on here. It's on the top of the board agenda. It is for to prepare for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining session with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms of the conditions of employment per board policy 0166, item D.
And we'd also like to add item A, employee discipline, too. Please, Craig, for the record.
Okay.
You.
Roll call.
Mr. Dozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yeah. We will now be in executive session.
Okay, so this is the first time I'm doing this. I have to stop screen share. Well, I'm gonna pause recording. Okay, Mrs. Mack, I guess we're going to go into the work session next, correct?
Yeah. I don't see the agenda, but.
Oh, sorry.
If you get them three. Work session, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're on item three, work session. We have A, refunding credit, and B, distance flirting. Mr. Gannick, well, so you're gonna lead the discussion on refunds and credits?
Yeah, I think it'll be hopefully a collaborative effort. So we have received, Joelle and I have received over the past couple of weeks, just a lot of questions. Luckily so far, I mean, I haven't had any, at least on my end, I haven't had any angry, angry phone calls. So some emails, some voicemails, some things that have trickled down. The biggest items seem to be preschool, all-day kindergarten, and pay to participate. So those are the three areas that we've received the most of, but we've also received some other requests. Some have been from the lunch fund, some of them have been for field trips, some of them have been for parking passes. And those are more, most of those are on the, on the smaller end. So it just depends on how the board would like to handle it. I had sent you guys a document that just kind of outlines, I think, what would make it the most efficient way to do things. I talked with a parent the other day, just trying to explain the process because I know before I got into education, it's like you think that, oh, it's just as simple as writing a check. But writing a check for a school system is a pretty tedious process with the way that it has to interface with the financial system and adding them as vendors. It's gonna take, the more refunds or credits that are refunds that we have, the longer that process is gonna take. So depending on what your, you guys' thoughts are on them, clearly, the document kind of guides people more towards credits for next year, credits towards other sibling accounts, if even if they're seniors or whatnot, but also giving the flexibility that, you know, for seniors that have no other siblings, you know, obviously, if that, if we're returning the money, then we're, we're gonna have to write checks in those situations. So.
I just have, Craig, I just have one question. I read through the refund credit discussion, which I, I, sounds like a great way to proceed. But I did, I guess, based on the information that you sent out the other day about, it seems like several other districts are not giving a refund for all-day kindergarten, and we are still, you know, paying our teachers for that. So I, I'm leaning towards not giving a full refund for the all-day kindergarten just because it's, you know, we still have significant costs associated with that. So I was wondering.
Teachers are still educating.
Right.
Yeah, any, as it pertains to all-day kindergarten, yes. If it is a full refund, 100%, yeah, it's, whatever that cost is, that's a total loss for us. Yes.
Okay.
So I think Joelle had said we were split. There are two other districts that are offering the all-day kindergarten. One is doing refunds and one is not. So I guess we're the deciding vote.
I guess, let's be clear, they're, they are, they are refunding April and then they didn't charge for May. So they never, they never sent out the bills for May. So it's not a full refund on the whole year. It's just would be impacting these last two months.
Well, and is there a way, and I had asked this question the other day, is there a way to maybe refund some of the operating costs that the district is saving for not having the kid, the all-day kindergarten kids in the building? And I realize that number is probably impossible to calculate, but it might be some sort of goodwill gesture to those families.
Yeah, and also the way that, I guess, we do it here, I had to get some clarification, is that the kindergarten deposit is actually what I guess is used for May. At least, that's what I've been told. We'd have to kind of dig into that to make sure that that was the case. So we don't actually bill for May. That's what they use the kindergarten deposit for.
So I think I asked this before, and I can't remember what the answer is, but for our students that are in full-day kindergarten, are they, I don't know what the online learning, it's probably, I don't know if there is, even is any online learning for kindergarten students. But, you know, it, you know, are the all-day kindergarten students receiving more instruction in this environment than the half-day, or are they receiving equal?
I guess as the kindergarten parent, you know, obviously, I don't know what the half-day model looks like. But, you know, we get our weekly assignments and, you know, we're still being assigned content and materials to review. So, but as far as how that relates to the content and whether or not it's similar to the half-day is still a question.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, Dr. Martin is also on, if we wanted to ask him or Joelle, I don't know if you have an answer to that.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So the way it's set up is that, you know, whether we're in brick and mortar or we're, you know, off-site, online, the kindergarten, they're, all kindergartners are responsible for learning all kindergarten standards. And, you know, clearly, when there's more time on task with all-day, there's some enrichment that goes on. They get, you know, an extra PE class, or they get some more art time. Well, we can't do that with a half. I'm just, from a, from a curriculum standpoint, like Brett said, yes, the standards are the same, and the mastery of standards and the expectation to complete those standards are the same in half-day and full-day.
So do we have any of the, are they doing, are they able to do any enrichment online where they're doing more enrichment with the full day than the, than the half-day?
Yeah, it's tough to measure right now. I mean, I think there are some fun activities that might be going out, some enrichment activities, but that's really difficult to measure right now in this pandemic. When we're in a building together, it's pretty clear to see, oh, you had time to do an extra or added it, Mother's Day project or what have you in an all-day where it might look a little abbreviated in, in a half-day versus an all-day.
Yeah, and I think too, on, in that same level, that, that enrichment piece, you know, you've got parents who are still working from home. And so some of those enrichment pieces or the PE or an extra art project, those are tentatively tabled for completion, so.
That's a good point.
Well, you know, with that one's point, we still have the staff. We're still paying for the staff. I'm not, I'm not really inclined to have refunds based on the fact that, you know, teaching is happening. It's just not happening in the same methodology that, you know, we have done in the other seven months or six months.
Is that the same feeling for preschool as well, or just are we talking about all-day kindergarten?
What's going on with preschool? Is it the same online, Mr. Martin, that's going on with kindergarten? How is that looking?
In, in some preschool classrooms, it is. What the preschool teachers did was they had reached out and tried to, that, that first week, you know, first week, first 10 days, and tried to figure out and kind of work with the parents on, you know, what's gonna work best here. And there are some classrooms, like the moderate intensive classroom, they have decided to do more, you know, assignments checking in. So we, that teacher is checking in multiple times each day where like the Zooms just don't work with moderate intensive, you know, non-verbal autistic kids. But, but in other classrooms, in other preschool classrooms, it has, it has worked some, but it's, you know, it's hard enough to keep attention for two minutes in a regular classroom in a brick and mortar. So can you imagine if you have a bunch of preschoolers on a Zoom? But they've come up with some really creative ways, or kindergarten, right? You wanna shorten that time, you wanna make it, you know, something engaging and quick, and then move on. And that's how you have to do it in the brick and mortar as well. So there, there is a little bit of a combination of, you know, face-to-face, digital face-to-face in preschool, but then more, they're doing more packets too. So they have developed packets and with appropriate social distancing, have been able to pass those packets off to parents, and parents have returned them.
No, I, I'm inclined with preschool as well. I mean, there's other things that are going into those preschools, whether they be, you know, the 504s for the year, or the IEP meetings that would be taking place. So again, we are still paying these teachers, and I'm sure it may be different, but they are still, you know, doing the best they can. So I would be inclined not to have a refund.
Just out of curiosity, how, how do you square that against pay to participate? Where, where, you know, we're, we're talking about paying supplementals, even though, obviously, you know, you're not able to deliver what, what you were designed to deliver, right? So sports are all canceled, you know, and other activities are canceled. And so coaches and advisors and whatnot are still gonna get paid, but we're talking about refunding the pay to participate fees so that the parents aren't getting, you know, we're, you know, I guess I'm just trying to understand what's the difference between pay to participate, where it sounds like you might be in favor of refunding the fees, but for all-day kindergarten and preschool, you don't. In both cases, we're paying, we're still paying the staff, and in both cases, the parents aren't getting what they paid for. And we're saying in one, we'll give you your money back, but in the other, we're not gonna give you your money back.
Well, first of all, coaching is an all-year job. I can tell you that three-fourths of our coaches, they do things in the fall. They do things, they run conditioning sessions all year. So there, the, the kid tour on the spring teams, a lot of them, they benefited from free coaching, basically. So unfortunately, the season didn't happen, but three-fourths of our coaches have been spending time with those kids. I know they do weekly Zoom meetings as well. Again, things changed, but we still, in my mind, should be paying the coaches.
That's, that's not true in all activities in the spring. I mean, I don't know how much. But again, I, I, I'm just asking, you know, how, you know, how you draw the line between, because what we're talking about doing is, what we have in front of us is the board can make a decision that says, you know, we're just gonna, we're gonna refund everything, all of the fees paid for all of these, and we're not gonna draw a distinction, and we're just gonna kind of absorb it. Or we could say, no, we're not gonna do it for anything. We're not gonna give any of the fees back because we still have the costs across the board. Or we can draw a line down the middle, which it sounds like some board members might be in favor of, that says, okay, for all-day preschool and for all-day kindergarten, we're gonna, we're not gonna refund, but for the pay to participate, we will refund. And so I guess we just need to all be comfortable with what we're advocating and why.
Well, and I just want to be clear on preschool, you know, our preschool is a special ed preschool, and our special ed kids are not charged tuition. I mean, so we're paying those teachers anyways to educate our special ed education kids who are not paying tuition. The only kids that pay tuition at our preschool are the typical peers that join those programs, and it, you know, in any given program, that's, you know, set by a ratio. And I don't believe we have the max ratio. So the preschool tuition is, is minimal compared to, you know, looking at full-day kindergarten. I just want to make that distinction, that not every kid that goes to our preschool is paying tuition at all. As a matter of fact, only a small number of the kids, only the typical peers are paying tuition.
Well, and that's why on the spreadsheet too, you'll see it's only says there's 14 kids. That's the number of typical peers that was calculated. That's, so that's not the size of preschool that was separated out.
So to Mark's point, we're paying that staff regardless because they're there to, be there for especially the kids who are not paid tuition, or who are not paying tuition.
Correct.
And that's, at least for preschool, that's a, that's a small, so I think Craig's numbers were in the, when you add it all up, we're talking about 300, over $300,000, and the preschool was only, you know, a little north of $4,000. So at least preschool is a, preschool's a small piece of that. So, yeah. But again, I guess, you know, we just, everybody's gotta think about where they want to come down on this because, you know, you, you could have families out there that are really hurting, that are saying, why aren't you refunding my all-day kindergarten if the board decides not to do that? But, but, but you're, you're refunding the pay to participate. And so, I mean, I'm inclined to do it all and not try to split the baby. I, I think trying to split the baby is going to be a challenge to try to explain your rationale to parents, especially if parents are undergoing economic duress.
Well, I have a couple of comments about that. I mean, I do see there's, it's academics versus sports and extracurriculars. So there is a way to draw the line in all of that, and I think that's a pretty, a line that a lot of people would understand. Just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just, I would just say, I guess, in both cases, parents paid for certain services that we can't deliver because of the pandemic.
Oh, I guess my question to Joelle and Craig was, do you have, how many people are asking for refunds for all-day kindergarten? And you don't need to give me an exact number. I'm just wondering what you've heard from all-day kindergarten families, preschool families, and pay to participate families? Just, I'm curious what you've heard.
So on the pay to participate side, just, I think a lot of people chose to not pay. So I guess let's, there's a little bit, so far, because of when the pandemic happened. So from my understanding and the latest data that I saw, as they're kind of working out all the details of the pay to participate, is we've collected around $20,000. The total cost that we would be anticipating is around $96,000. So only $20,000 has been actually paid. And I think that's because people kind of, you know, they held off in their payments, and we obviously did not make it a very proactive approach to be sending out reminders at that time. So that is a little bit different there. I mean, I don't think I personally have received a ton. I've received maybe two or three emails and maybe one, two phone calls personally. I, I don't know what Joelle has received.
Yeah, I'm about the same. And as a matter of fact, I had a very nice email, I think many of you were copied on, from a parent who had paid for all-day kindergarten, and said, please don't refund me, please donate it, or give it to a family that's in need right now. So, I mean, we've had some, you know, people say, please don't do that. You know, our teachers are still teaching, and if somebody else needs that money worse than we do, please give it to somebody else. So, I mean, we've had parents reach out that way as well.
Is the all-day, sorry, but is the all-day kindergarten, is that charged monthly?
They can pay for the full year, or you can do monthly payments.
Okay, so if you've got a number of parents who will pay monthly and then just decide, hey, I'm not paying you for April or May because we're in the pandemic, and we say, well, we're not gonna refund all-day kindergarten, you can't go back to those people and say, you've gotta pay because we're not gonna refund back, versus the parents who paid for the year, who you're then gonna go back and say, oh, sorry, you paid for the whole year, so we're just gonna keep it.
I think most people paid for April, and then remember, May is actually paid by their deposit, so they're almost like prepaid.
Oh, okay.
So, and I, I mean, we receive, I know we received a lot of checks for April, because it was, we weren't really sure, because that was before the governor, we didn't know we were gonna be in this for this long at that time. A lot of people were already sending their checks in March for April. So I think most of those are paid. Probably not all of them, but a lot of them are paid.
Okay.
We need to decide where we sit. I want to make sure you know, not that if people are feeling split, I'm not gonna be able to vote on this because the MOU contains my husband's supplemental. So the four of you have to decide the direction on that.
Well, I'm sorry, are we voting on this? Because this is just a first session.
No. Oh, sorry.
That'll be, as it relates to the supplementals later, is what she's saying.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Yeah.
That's okay. Um.
Okay, so where do we wanna, where do we wanna vote this? You know, to Mark's point, you said that you don't feel comfortable, you do want to split it, or you don't want to split it?
Oh, I don't. I don't, I don't think there's a strong rationale to, to, you know, to refund one and hold on to the other, I, I think. And especially given in light of the whole pandemic and the financial duress a lot of people are under. I think we should just treat this all the same and refund, you know, refund payments for services that we can't provide because of the pandemic.
Brad, how do you feel?
I agree with Mark. And I think that lady that, that said to not refund her money, I think, as far as I'm concerned, she's welcome to donate it anywhere she wants to.
I come down on the other, I, I come down on the other side. It doesn't sound like a lot of people are, and this is, I'm fine with the refund for the supplementals. I don't think we refund all-day kindergarten. If we do, it's a partial refund, not, not a full refund. I don't, it doesn't sound like families are asking for it, and we have to pay the teacher still. So that's where I am.
You could go across the board and say half. I mean, just as, I'm throwing that number out there, if you're saying.
Yeah, or just, I, I would say like, maybe refund that April payment, and then the people who haven't paid it yet, I, I don't know. I mean, I know this is making it harder for you, Craig, but I don't think we should do a full day, or an entire refund for the all-day kindergarten because that's just where I come down on it.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mrs. Kramer on this. I am one of those families that was able to, to pay upfront, and I still know that we're paying our teachers, and I know that our teachers are still teaching. That being said, as Mr. Martin described, you know, the same level of education is still being delivered to both our half-day kindergarten students as well as our full-day kindergarten students. And so I think if there was potentially a, a happy medium in that capacity for specifically the kindergarten, the all-day kindergarten families, I think that would be a possible solution.
So I, I feel like pay to participate, I see it a little bit differently. I can see giving them a credit and returning that. I think anyway that we look at it, we're gonna be financially in the red on, on a lot of these things. I mean, we are delivering services, and I understand your argument, Mark, but, you know, the pay to participate thing, because we haven't collected that much anyways, I don't see it as much of a loss to give it, to give it back or credit it, whereas, you know, the teachers are delivering the service, and I do see that as a larger loss if we're gonna reimburse tuition. So I would.
And to be clear, Mrs. Mack, to be, to be clear, Mrs. Mack, when we talk about potentially refunding the kindergartners or the kindergarten families, we're not necessarily saying that we're not paying the teachers. It's just coming, it's just gonna push us into the red further.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, I wasn't saying that.
No, no, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Of course, we're paying the teachers. Okay, so I don't know. Do you have, do we have direction at all?
No.
No.
Craig, I really liked what you proposed. I guess I'm just saying, I don't know that I would take out the tuition from what you proposed.
Okay, so you like the, there are options, but we're pushing people towards refunds, credits, or donations, or well.
But with respect to the supplementals, but I feel like we need to put the tuition in a different category. That would be how I think we should go, go ahead with that.
I mean, does it help, I guess, if we do the in-between, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Dozen, in terms of refunding April, since they already paid their, I guess, their deposit last year when they signed up? I mean, I don't know, I'm just, does that make you guys uncomfortable?
I'm fine with ending April and keeping May.
I mean, it, it, it sounds like that, that everybody was comfortable with refunding pay to participate fees, and, and I'm gonna assume preschool also, since it's so small, which then goes to all-day kindergarten. It sounds like three of the five of us on all-day kindergarten would prefer to, to not refund those fees.
Or do a small refund, but not a full refund.
I don't think at any point we were talking about doing a full refund. The only thing that we were about refunding, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Pro rate, right. I was assuming too, we're talking about prorated. I mean, you wouldn't refund the entire year.
No.
So explain to me why proration, because they're still getting services. So why would, what would be the rationale of why we're prorating?
Because we don't have to pay for the bus and the lights and the, I, I mean, just there's some operating cost savings, that's it.
Well, no, the pro, the proration would be that the student, that the families didn't get all-day kindergarten for two months. And so you would, you would prorate it and say you get two months of fees back, if we wanted to keep it simple and say April and May. So if we wanted to do the refunds, we would look to refund probably April and May. I mean, we could go into March too, but one was the shut, the school shutdown, March 13th or something, or, you know, then you got spring break in there. And, I mean, it's probably just cleaner if we wanted to do the refund to say, listen, your, your, your kids weren't, because, well, listen, a lot of that all-day kindergarten, right? And for some parents, that's not daycare because the student's in school all day. So, you know, the proration would be, hey, well, let's just call it April and May. We will refund you April and May because you weren't getting all-day kindergarten in April and May.
Except Mark, they already paid, they already paid for May.
Right.
Right, hence the refund.
But they're getting a half-day of education, the same as the non-paying kids. So we're refunding the other half that they're not getting? Is that what we're doing? Because they are getting education, and we are paying that teacher for that. So I, I'm not really getting why we're still gonna refund. Because they're asking their full, their full amount, but they're still getting educated.
Well, for, sorry, but three, a majority of the board right now is not in favor of any refund. So if you're, if, if the three who are in favor of no refund whatsoever, if that, if you're solid on that, then the direction is there, right? Then a majority of the board has decided, no refunds, so we don't have to talk about prorating, and are you getting this or that? If, if three of you don't, are in the camp where you would prefer not to refund anything, then we don't need to go any further.
All right, so can I draw on one thing? I just wanted to, so I, I think this will come when we, when Dave talks about our, our distance learning plan. You know, we set up expectations in that plan, if you read them, as, as to what is appropriate in terms of instruction and how much kids should be engaged. That number did not differentiate between half-day kindergarten and full-day kindergarten. It said, if you are a kindergarten student, you know, the expectation is that you're spending 45 minutes to an hour. So if you go on the guidance based on our distance learning plan, which was based on best practices, we didn't make up that number. We took that number from reputable resources and built the level engagement. So parents knew an appropriate amount of time that kids should be engaged in instruction. We didn't differentiate between a full-day kindergarten student should be engaged this much and a half-day. It's a kindergarten student should be engaged for this amount of time. So, you know, from that standpoint, yes, all of our kindergartners are having learning experiences. They're all engaged in education, but they're now all being engaged these last couple of months for the same amount of time as recommended by our distance learning plan. So from that standpoint, those kids who are paying for full-day kindergarten are not getting full-day kindergarten. They're getting kindergarten services that were provided, that are provided remotely based on a recommendation of time they should be engaged. And that's the same for half-day and/or full-day kindergarten. And that's the same for half day and or full day kindergarten students.
But during the school year, the standards are still the same and the time allotment.
Hundred percent.
I mean, usually in the afternoon in kindergarten, you're just repeating and reinforcing. So that's what they're paying for is that extra time. Okay, but they're still, still in the same amount of instruction as they're getting in the distance learning. It's equitable. It's just the afternoon reinforcement that those other kids got. They're not getting much more curriculum. The requirements are the same to, to your point.
Well, and with all, with all due respect, Mark, I didn't say I didn't want to refund anything. I, I do think it would go a long way to maybe refund, give some of the kindergarten or the all day kindergarten parents back some of the end of the year tuition, not all of it. I'm just not in favor of a full refund for the last two and a half months that they've missed. That's all. I'd like it to be a partial.
Okay, so I guess.
So I, I would like to not refund. So I'm different than Ellen in that, in that case. And I think Brittany, I, I think she said same as Ellen.
Correct.
So is that right, Brittany?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then.
Tell me in with Ellen.
So there you go. Now we have direction.
We're good.
You don't have direction. It's just what we have is three people who think a partial, a partial refund, they would be in favor of, but we haven't talked about what the partial, what's the amount? Are we just talking about May or are we talking about something else?
From, in my opinion, one, one out of two months is, is appropriate.
I, I think that's the easiest way to split it and do, and do one month.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, now what about any of the other requests that we get in, in terms of, I mean, I broke them down just in case, but the, all the other things. Proration of parking passes, field trips. What else have we received?
Lunch, the lunch accounts.
The lunch accounts. I mean, do we want to say it's only by credit unless they're actually leaving the district like it, like it has been? Or, I mean, I.
Yeah.
How much of that, now, when we're talking, I mean, I'm guessing some of these are going to be pretty small amounts.
Well, yeah, some of them could be like $10, $20 is what it is. And then I feel, I mean, I feel like if you're doing it for one, you should offer it to all because if you're only getting two or three requests, then maybe the answer is just no. I don't, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, that just seems crazy to like refund somebody for parking or a field trip. I mean, how many field trips were even paid for ahead of time?
Well, so let's talk about the parking passes for a minute. We charge an exorbitant amount of money for kids to park their cars, $100 for the year. That is absolutely ludicrous, but we do. And it's, it breaks down to $25 per quarter. And that fee helps pay for the extra police officer that we have that patrols the parking lot during the school year. So we're not incurring that cost right now because we don't have that police officer there. Many parents have the kids, if they, you know, a privilege to drive means that you're buying your own parking pass. And right now, a lot of our kids aren't working because they can't. And so these are kid requests coming back and saying, you know, $25 to me right now is a lot of money and I paid $100 to park at the high school and I didn't get to do it for the whole fourth period, quarter. Can I please have my $25? So as, as, you know, it sounds like a, a small amount to our kids that are, that having to pay for it in the first place and now not being employed, you know, they're, and they're struggling too. So it's a, it's a, it's, you know, a reality that our kids are facing and, and we're asked this question. And, you know, the particular question that I got was from a junior and I'm, I know, you know, Craig would prefer to credit it and I'm sure that student might be fine with that because it'll be less money next year that they have to pay. But we charge our kids quite a bit of money to park in that parking lot.
So my, my thought on the matter is that that, that, you know, the board gave direction on all the big items. These are really small items and I would feel comfortable empowering Craig and/or Joelle to make the call on these small things like field trips and $25 for parking.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay with me.
Okay, perfect.
All right. That is helpful.
Okay, so we have direction. We're going to move on to item B, our distance learning plan.
All right, that's me. Craig's going to be my wingman. He can get that document up. Oh, there we go.
Is it there? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so good evening, everyone. I'll try to be as brief as possible here. You know, when this all went down, we quickly got together and, you know, kind of came up with some district priorities. And, you know, immediately what came to mind was we were going to try to support as best we possibly could, these social emotional needs of our students and families, establish a mode of communication and obviously continue the teaching and learning process as best we possibly could. So, you know, we, we strategized, we came up with some ideas and expectations that we had. But then, you know, we, we also kind of looked around and tried to find a district that was an expert at pandemics and we couldn't find any. So they were all in our, in the same position. So what we did is we looked, we probably pulled from, gosh, Joelle, it was maybe a dozen districts, I think. And, you know, some very much like ours, similar demographics, but others, you know, more urban. And there were great components in a lot of the different plans that we looked at. And, you know, they, they somehow got it out a little quicker. I think Joelle had mentioned earlier that some of them had like calamity plans on file with the state of Ohio. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't have that because, you know, for one reason or another, I, I think we didn't have to. Years ago, we, we chose not to do that, which is fine. So this is broken down into three levels and we're not going to spend a lot of time on levels one and two. But the levels one, level one is, you know, school is open, but there's increased absences. Well, that's not what we're doing right now. A level two is school is still open, but there's significant and prolonged absences. Now, the nice thing is, is we can go back to levels one and two because that's going to help us when we plan for August because there's a lot of uncertainty about August. But we want to be ready for August and we've got, that is well underway. We've got the entire district collaborating right now and, and talking and trying to think what it would be like in a traditional brick and mortar with social distancing, in a complete off-site learning like we have now, but maybe, you know, tweaking it and getting better. And what would a hybrid model look like with a combination of both? Right now, we're in level three and there are a number of components. We're going to go over those shortly. So district priorities, student and parent expectations, teacher expectations, feedback assessment, communication, et cetera. So Craig, can you scroll down to page, at bottom of page four, I believe? Right there, yeah.
On this one?
Yeah, so up just a little bit, right there. So as you can see, our district priorities was to, you know, continue the support of our, the social emotional needs of our students and families, very, very important. And then continue student learning and, and off-site online instruction. You know, and, and I don't want to read all of them to you. I mean, some of them are very, very just common sense logic, right? So for the first one, students and parents required to work daily at home to complete assignments. You know, participate, we want you to participate. You know, seek help if you need it. This is for students and parents. You could scroll down, Craig. Which, those are just very, very, you know, basic common sense. And, and yet, you know, it's, it's challenging. We have a handful of kids that are, have been MIA and we have counselors, administrators, teachers busily trying to, you know, track them down and, and find them. So it's not a lot, it's a handful. But, you know, that's the expectation is you're going to participate, you're going to seek help and you're going to be present every day for teaching and learning. I mean, obviously, you know, be a good digital citizen. I think we've had, you know, some pretty good luck with that. I don't want to jinx us, nothing inappropriate so far. Then we have the teacher expectations. And again, you know, work remotely, but be prepared to come in if, if necessary. And this is something that Joelle had mentioned earlier. These are approximate work times, cumulative work times. Now, it's going to differ, we know. A preschooler with, you know, maybe some significant learning needs, an hour a day might be too much, you know, and that's going to have to be spaced out. But then your AP student at, at high school is taking five AP classes. Yeah, it might be a little bit more than three hours on some days. So those were, you know, approximate times based on, you know, some, what other districts are doing as well as some research. I can't remember the websites. I remember, I thought it was one of them, the Pediatric Association, something came out. So we might have referenced that in there. Scroll down a little bit, Craig. Keep going, keep going, keep. You know, workloads. We, we were trying to calibrate the workloads and that has been a work in progress. So, you know, you just don't want to give kids a boatload of work in Google Classroom. But, you know, that calibrating that is, has been, you know, an ongoing learning process. Synchronous and asynchronous learning, we're a little, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. We're going to get probably into that more next year. Scroll down, Craig. You know, different types of class, three through 12. Plus, you know, our preschool, one of, our preschool has a Google Classroom that they all collaborate through and they push out assignments to, to parents. We just recently activated Google Meets for the entire district as well as the, the Gmail. But there's different restrictions on that for the little kids. You know, teachers are using Zoom and Flip, Flipgrid, Screencastify, Snagit. They're using different types of technologies to meet the learning needs of their students. Obviously, that runs the gamut and it looks different at different levels. Teachers are accessing email, obviously they're differentiating. Scroll down, Craig. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Our special education staff, you know, they too are, you know, doing their best to try to meet those needs of their students. Attending Zoom meeting, IP meetings, ETR meetings are, it's, it's, it's challenging, but they're still doing it and they're meeting those needs as stipulated in the, the IEPs. Keep going, Craig. Our intervention staff, again, you know, some of these are, are more at-risk students, but, you know, they're particularly like the EL students, you know, they really do benefit from that, that face-to-face multimodality, total physical response type teaching. That, that's difficult to get at on an online platform exclusively. We have sent additional resources home with parents that have picked it up and then, you know, dropping it off. So, you know, we're doing the best we possibly can. Many of our special education teachers, as well as our intervention, reading intervention and EL teachers have joined the Google Classroom that, where their students belong. So they have been assisting there and collaborating with the homeroom teacher as well as meeting in a separate breakout Zoom meetings. Scroll down, Craig. Art music PE, some of the specialists down at the elementary buildings, they have tried to come up with fun activities. And again, they have joined the classroom or virtual classroom with their homeroom teachers and, and colleagues. Scroll down, Craig. Keep going, keep, okay, feedback and assessment. So feedback's really, really important. And there again, we see the asynchronous and synchronous. You know, synchronous teaching and learning is difficult to do. It's difficult to have every single student online at the exact same time, learning at the exact same pace. It's probably easier on the asynchronous side where students are engaged in, in classwork and they're competing at their own, completing at their own pace, time, that type of thing. So we, we have tried to encourage our teachers to do both asynchronous and synchronous. And that looks different at different levels. And I just threw in a couple of quotes from some big feedback assessment gurus, Warmly and Stiggins. You know, students can learn without grades. However, they can't learn without assessment and useful feedback. And students can usually hit a target when they can see it and the target stays still. Scroll down. Assessment's been a huge, huge component. We are working on a, a document right now that's going to really crystallize what pre-K eight looks like. High school is staying with grades, high school and, and the pre-K, the, the two big words, flexibility and leniency on all student assessment and all student learning. So what we've done and what the coaches and administrators and teachers have been working really, really hard this week is identifying those small bundle of essential standards. And then what we're going to use is a proficient, near proficient and below proficient for pre-K eight. And we are going to have language behind each of that. What does proficient mean? What does near proficient mean? And what does below proficient mean? And then we're, we're going to essentially attach that to the standards. Again, it's going to be holistic for, for reading, math, science and social studies based on those essential standards. There's going to be a whole, a whole harmless provision in there and that's why it's in the plan. We want our teachers to hold harmless students that, you know, have shown the entire year a level of proficiency that is commensurate with the work that they're doing on their off-site learning. And we're seeing that, we're not seeing kids totally tank. So we wanted to put that in there. Scroll down, Craig. Yeah, so then the report cards, so yeah, nine, 12 for high schools, typical grades. And then there'll be one more document coming up clarifying what that pre-K eight proficient, near proficient and not proficient will look like. Communication, obviously encouraging everyone to continue to collaborate, communicate. Administration, teachers, administration and home, teachers in home, continuing with newsletters, constant contact, et cetera. And then schedules and Craig, if you just want to click on Highlands there, we can go to Highland real quickly. Is it going to allow us? Yeah, so Highlands got their, their Zoom schedules up and like the other schools. So they're, they're trying to minimize the conflicts between, you know, like families that have, you know, multiple kids and, you know, multiple devices going at the same time. That's a little long-winded, sorry about that. Any questions? Oh, it's beautiful silence. Talked your ear off. I could go on for 20 more minutes, but no.
We're good.
Mr. Martin, what happens with eligibility for the older grades? Have we, have they decided, like, is it OHSAA, is that right? That decides that or is it each individual district that decides? And then you'll need a cumulative grade point for that?
OHSAA has ruled for the fall that they are considering every student eligible.
Did every school submit a plan at the, I saw Highland, I, you kind of cut out of that document. Did Chippewa have a plan as well?
Yes, so I had talked to Mr. Hartland and I asked Mr. Hartland, he and the preschool are not on there. And I asked him, I said, are you, are you sure that, that Hilton doesn't need it? And he assured me, he had meetings with his PSO and his staff. And I, I have not heard anything. So evidently it either went out in hard copy or the teachers have just done a phenomenal job there with, I don't know, communicating and resolving any kind of conflict. So Hilton, they didn't need that online one. But the other buildings felt that they did and they did it. Middle school is obviously, it's, 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 it's pretty complex, but it works in high school as well in Chippewa and Highland. Yeah, that's the middle school. So you can see they have assigned hours. It, it did and it's alleviated a lot of conflicts and I think it's, it's helped parents and, and teachers, you know, with a more sane approach to multiple situations at home.
So how are we communicating this plan out? We're going to put it on our web, the website? What's the plan? Where is it at right now?
Well, it's been on our website. We started a new, you know, off-site learning tab and it's got a bunch of resources for parents. It was sent out with a link to it three weeks ago in a district email from myself. So this plan's been out there for a while and, you know, people have been looking, using it and looking at it, so.
This is just an idea, Joelle, just because I find it more effective and people want to click on it. Would it be possible, would it be a good idea for you to make like a small video where you're talking to the parents? You could send the link out and say, thank you. I just want to make sure that you all, you know, know that we have this plan in place, that every school has this Zoom agenda except for Hilton. But like, would that be a, a good thing for them, parents? And maybe they would engage more because we're still getting a lot, you know, where is this? I haven't seen it. And I, and I see them, my, my district I teach in, I don't know that people, it's not our fault, but are not going to the website, they're not opening those. And maybe a video link that we could push out on Facebook or something would be something, you know, interactive. would be something, you know, interactive, good, you know, personal, just a thought.
Okay, I can look into doing that. You know how much I love being on camera. Go quickly.
You have Mr. Martin, you could make Mr. Martin do it.
I could, I could delegate it to Dr. Martin and say, Doc, you need to go do a video.
Do a video. I just say, I've been putting out a couple of videos.
There you go. Well, guess what? Now you got another one.
Get Doc Dave and then put his lips for it, and then, there you go. Flat Dave can tell the message.
We could do Flat Dave. We got Flat Dave. We can have him do it.
Do that.
Put his lips for, kind of listen, he can be talking. Read my lips. I think something personal for him would be really go over well with our parents, and it'd be nice to push it out to the platform rather than just one more written communication, you know?
Perfect.
I know you.
Dave will be all over that.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be that long.
I'm combing my hair right now.
Well, the other, the other idea is, I know that, I know that this was communicated out in one of the email blasts that went out, but this might be something good to include when we do the district-wide emails, just as an ongoing blurb for, you know, whatever, another three or four emails just saying, reminder, there is an online distance learning plan, and here, here's a link to it. And a lot of times, people need to have something in front of them four or five times before they, they kind of recognize it.
Yep, communication.
We will make sure, I got another email going out next week, so we'll make sure. We'll make sure that it gets out of the district.
Cool.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That's good stuff, and it's good for the future as well, for the Blizzard bags. The Blizzard set never happened anymore, so that's good. Okay, so we're going to move on, if that's okay with everyone. We have item four, superintendent's other business. We have A, the MOU, B, distance learning plan, Mr. Martin just addressed, and we have C, motion to approve superintendent's other business. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I need, more discussion needed? Okay.
Well, now just that afterwards, we're going to, I assume we're going to, we're going to post the MOU.
Yes.
Well, the union will have to approve it as well, so they were waiting for the board's decision on that. And then they have, I believe, the last communication I have was going to be kind of like a drive-through voting on this first thing tomorrow morning. And so after that ratification, we will then be able to post it, yes.
Really? We have to wait? Because we're voting on this now in a public session, so.
Right, so just like we did the last MOU last summer, we voted on it first, and then BEA voted on it. We're following the same procedure that we did last year with that MOU. So we're voting on it, then they're voting on it, and then we'll be able to post it.
Right.
No, I understand that sequencing. I'm just, what I don't understand is why we can't post it now since we were just conducting the public's business and saying we're approving this MOU. So why, I mean, if, so tomorrow, if the BEA doesn't ratify it for some reason, were you saying we wouldn't post something that we voted on?
But that we, that would be a moot point if it's not agreed upon by both parties? Is it then, it doesn't, it's not relevant, I guess?
It's not, it's not a moot point. We're doing the public's business, and we're voting, we're voting publicly to approve an MOU. I guess, I'm just talking, you know, it's a moot point mostly because I'm sure they're like, they're going to approve it tomorrow, but it's a sequencing thing, you know, we're conducting a meeting, we're voting on this. The public can't see what we're voting on. Why wouldn't we post it right after this meeting?
I will, I will do this. I will check with legal. I don't, I don't know if it's considered a legal binding document until it's voted on by both parties. And I don't, and I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that, but I will find out. And if we are required or can post it tomorrow prior to the vote of the union, we will certainly post it. I just, I just don't know the answer to that, Mark.
I don't think, let me just say this, though, I don't think BEA is voting on this until Monday. So they're not going to be voting tomorrow.
If that's the case, that's news to me, because, you know, there, that was not the last conversation I had with, oh, with BEA on this. But if you know something different than.
Joel, I think it's the case, so. So to that point, Mark.
Well, I think regardless.
Oh, go ahead.
I mean, I think regardless of if they vote on it tomorrow or they vote on it Monday, it would be good to get clarity on this, because my understanding is that, you know, we're voting on a public, we're voting on an issue in public, and we're voting to approve an MOU. And if the public goes out there to look at the MOU, they can't see it. And so it would be good to get clarity on this and say, hey, we're voting on it. Whatever, what happens with the BEA when they, when they act or when they don't? I don't, at least my understanding would be that that wouldn't, it shouldn't matter. We're, this is a public matter that we're voting on, so let's just get clarity on that and then decide.
Yeah, I'll get clarity on it, and I will definitely let you guys know tomorrow, first thing.
Okay, so we can still move ahead with all of this. Anything else to add? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
I abstain, because my husband supplemental was in the MOU.
Okay.
Okay, so item five, closing items. We have A, announcement, B, adjournment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any announcements, Maggie?
No, just, I hope everyone stays safe and well. We will, we have graduation kind of figured out. The governor came out with some additional guidance today and gave three models of which, very specific models. And it was very funny that the one model that he gave, you know, his preferences is that every district does a virtual graduation. His second preference, if you can't do that, you do a drive-in ceremony, which, great. And the third idea was to do an event, but 10 people or less at a time. So he, you know, was envisioning that one family could come at one time and get the diploma, and then they leave, and then the next family. So we are still within the guidelines of what the governor is doing, plans for Oregon, plans for graduation. We put out a communication today to all families at the high school so they understood why we are continuing with our plans on June 13th in the graduation. And we clarified why we are not allowed to open up the stadium. As per, OHSAA has mandatory shutdown of all athletic facilities during the time of the governor's ordered shutdown. And so we're not able to do that, and a communication went out to all families at the high school this afternoon. So I just, I just want everyone to know that, you know, it's, we are doing what we can within the context of the orders to make sure that we are celebrating the wonderful achievements of our class of 2020.
My announcement, I want to say you're doing a fabulous job, Ms. Maggie, you really are. And the rest of your staff, our teachers are doing amazing, and I know it's been difficult. And I know that, you know, you've taken a lot of heat for a lot of things, but you've been steadfast, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm glad that you're the one leading us through this time. And I'm really glad that we have these teachers, and I know that they are working their tails off to the best of their ability. And I think Mr. Martin's plan, which has already been out there, but if we continue communicating it, that I think it will help to understand, you know, that we do still have that level of education, and we are providing it to the best of our ability. Nothing has changed. The rigor's still there, and, you know, it's just a matter of communicating it again. And again, like Mark said about five times, but thank you. You've done a fabulous job.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. But y'all be safe.